During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, council members will be participating online and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Good afternoon and welcome to Goal Setting Special Meeting of the Burbank City Council on Monday, January 31, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Raise your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Happy afternoon, great to be here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Present.
Councilmember Springer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Present.
I'm sorry, you're not, no, 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 it's Vice Mayor Anthony.
Well, I just got promoted.
And then Mayor Talamontes.
We'll struggle through that.
Just seeing if you're awake.
Thank you very much. Yes, present, thank you. Now is the time for public comment on agenda items only. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one caller and we'll put it through.
Thank you.
Our first caller is Maya Shavzen.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Maya Shavzen. I live on East Pan Avenue near the corner of Sixth Street. I moved here recently. The main reason I moved to peaceful Burbank is I was getting away from the noise of central LA. So imagine my surprise as I wake up almost every morning to horrible noise from gas-powered leaf blowers. So I came here today to turn the council's attention to this terrible menace on our street. I reviewed the city code, the municipal code, section 9-3-214 does specify certain definitions and times to operate these leaf blowers, but I believe this section is way too broad and it doesn't take into account the density of the housing, the small parcels of land. So I am right now in a situation where even though some neighbors may be complying with the municipal code, the results are still incessant noise for hours every day. So for example, my building is wedged between six single-family homes. So even if each of them, even though they have tiny yards, operate the leaf blowers for 15 minutes, and some of them certainly go over that, the result is at least a solid hour of leaf blower noise every single day. So I came to this issue from the angle of the noise disturbance and just doing very quick research will show that there are very many more significant downsides to the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. They cause incredible pollution. They pollute more than all the cars in the states. They blow up dust that causes severe illness. A third of the fuel in the gas-powered engine is emitted unburnt. The smell is horrible, the sound is horrible. I personally cannot, you know, police or go downstairs or log every neighbor for every address that uses the gas-powered leaf blowers, but when I do sometimes go downstairs, it is, A, very difficult to breathe. The workers from the landscaping companies are very nice, but they explain, you know, that's their job. And I believe that they are also hurt by the operation of these machines. And I would like to ask the council to move on three different accounts. I believe immediately it would be possible to change the municipal code. I believe that, you know...
Ma'am, your time is up. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to have your contact information passed on to the city manager and then he can pass it on to certain staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
He'll pass it on to staff that oversees that kind of work. Today, our focus, our agenda item is goal setting. So thank you for calling and you'll receive a call from one of our staff here in the city. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that another goal for the council would be to ban these machines.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Do we have any other callers?
Yes, it's coming through.
Our second caller is Leah Harrison.
Hello, hi, Mayor Talamontes, all of you wonderful city council members. My name is Leah Harrison. I am Chair of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission and I'm very appreciative of this meeting today on goal setting. I did want to put a word in about hoping that maybe one of our goals for our city could be to enhance and support our arts in this city. The LA County and managers have adopted a county-wide cultural policy to help grow and support the arts in order to reboot some of the art economic systems and to help a vast majority of our city people who have been impacted economically and socially because of the pandemic and the loss of the arts. This could be through applying for funds through Build Back Better or the infrastructure or any NEA grants. So we would really love to see if this could be one of our goals for our city. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for calling. Madam City Clerk, any other?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much for welcoming. Hello, everybody. I am calling on behalf of the arts of Burbank, all the artists and organizations. And I wanted to mention that we're proposing funding for grants to art orgs and to artists and venues. We really need a venue subsidizing for art performance and for a grant writer for art-related projects within Burbank, and we need your involvement in voice to build on arts appreciation and on audience attendance. I would sort of want to refrain from the word awareness because of the fact that, you know, we are part of LA County and we are very aware of the arts. It's been happening a long time, but I think it's been something that has not been put to full use with our city. And I have had my professional company of Pacific Valley Dance Theater and Media City Dance right here in the heart of downtown Burbank for 22 years. And we also have worked in the past with the Burbank Symphony and we would love to be able to see a good performing arts begin to come to life here in Burbank because Burbank is a wonderful city and it needs to be, needs to be just that.
Any other speakers? Thank you for calling. Any other speakers?
Our next caller is Jared Langford.
Welcome.
Hey, thank you for giving me the time to speak on here. My name is Jared Langford. I'm a representative of the Carpenters Local Union 661 that represents 5,000 working families in the area. As you can see, I sent in some letters regarding your guys' goal setting and I'd really like to make it a point this year that with the housing element update coming down, the Burbank TOD specific plan and also the Golden State specific plan that the city council make it a goal theirs to get labor standards into each of those plans. You know, as I had stated before, there's a bunch of issues going on in the residential market and with these plans being open right now is the time to be able to address those issues. If you have any questions, please refer to my letter. I'm hoping that you guys make it a point this year to implement labor standards into those general plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers?
I am, if you give me one second because the calls, okay, no, it's safe to say we are done.
Great, thank you very much. There being no other public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. My colleagues have any response to the public comment? Okay, none. Mr. City Manager, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will follow up with that first caller, but I did want to note that California did pass a law back in, actually starting in 2024, there'll be a ban of the sale of gas-powered leaf blowers. So that starts on 2024, so that was passed recently. So we'll certainly still follow up with the caller to address immediate concerns, but there is already a California state law that has been passed to actually ban the sales of gas-powered leaf blowers.
Great, thank you very much. Council will now proceed to the goal-setting session. We will review council documents and discuss and prioritize city council goals for this coming year, 2022. At this time, we would like to invite City Manager Justin Hess to introduce the session's facilitator. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for allowing me to say just a few words before we begin. Staff looks forward to today's goal-setting session. Burbank is a great city that prides itself in thinking and planning ahead, and despite still having to deal with the pandemic, the city continues to provide exceptional services to the community. We also have had several accomplishments this past year that we should be proud of. I want to thank the council for their leadership, support, and steady direction through this unprecedented time. Today, we want council to dream and think of how we can make Burbank an even better place in the future. Our facilitator has a great goal-setting session planned for you today. And just as important as determining your goals today, we are looking for council to approve our How We Work Together document and our Expectations document. It is important that we recommit to the norms and protocols laid out in both of these documents. This is important because it helps us be an effective team and at the same time, make sure that we remain civil, respectful, and professional in how we handle all the city's businesses. We certainly serve as an example to others, including our boards and commissions and the community. With that, I would like to introduce today's facilitator, Mr. Jim Yule. Jim is the Chief Engagement Officer of Breaking the Chain Consulting, which is an organizational development company that builds strong, healthy, and purpose-driven leaders and teams. Jim started Breaking the Chain Consulting for one simple reason. He believes every person deserves to work in a place where they feel strong, valued, and fulfilled. Jim is the bestselling author of the book, The Arch: A Framework for Leadership in Life. He is a California Post Master Instructor who delivers a fun and engaging learning experience. He has a master's degree in organizational leadership. He has taught graduate and undergraduate courses in leadership at Woodbury University, and Jim is also a Gallup Certified Strengths Coach. And he has worked and coached with several of the current city's executives, as well as performed different team-building workshops with different departments throughout the city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council, I please would like to introduce Jim Yule.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hess, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Talamontes. Mayor Talamontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, City Council Member Springer and Schultz and Frutos, thank you so much for having me today. Just a little bit real quick about Breaking the Chain Consulting. Our sole purpose is one simple thing, and that is to build strong, healthy, cohesive teams. And by that, we know that we're going to pay a huge impact on putting an end to employee disengagement. Been working with Burbank for about the past six years, probably, well, it started in about 2016. We worked with Parks and Rec, the City Manners Office, the City Attorney's Office, Public Works, BWP, you name it, we've kind of been able to have a hand in working with the city of Burbank. So we've really got a good handle, I think I've got a pretty good handle, on the culture of the organization, an idea of where the direction of where the city wants to go. And so that's what we're all about. One of the things I wanted to transition to, and I wanted to open this up to the city council members, is one of the, if we could put on the PowerPoint, if you don't mind? Awesome, thank you. So one of the, one of the most important things in any organization, well, the most important thing in any organization, especially when this body gets together, when we talk about city council, or if it's any team that gets together, it is the team. It's when we get that team together that is the most important thing that is happening at that moment. When we get this body together, for example, when we get this body right here, which is Mayor Talamontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, the rest of the council members, Mr. Springer, Mr. Schultz, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Springer, Mr. Schultz, and Mr. Anthony, when we get everybody together, that is the most important thing that is happening right now at this moment. Now, I want to throw this out to the city council. What do you think is the greatest hurdle in any team when they come together? I'm just going to kind of throw this out to you folks. What do you think is the greatest hurdle?
Communication?
Okay, communication, absolutely. And so I'm going to throw this out even further to the city council. What do you think gets in the way of that communication?
Understanding, I would say.
Okay, understanding, even a willingness to understand, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other ideas?
Egos.
Ha ha, now we're getting somewhere. You're taking the wind out of my sails.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, not at all, that is exactly where, that is exactly where we are going. Every one of those things at the very heart of that is, yes, ego. And so one of the things I want to fast-forward to here is this idea, many of you may have read a book, or maybe you've heard of a book called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. It was written by a gentleman by the name of Patrick Lencioni. And one of the things he asserts is that every team is full of incredibly smart people. When we get this body together, this city council, we have incredibly smart people in here. And when I say smart, and when he says smart, what he means is we've got people here that they know budget, they know marketing, they know strategy, and they know how to use information technology, as indicated by what we're doing here today. But when we're just a smart team, and I think we would all agree, we've got a smart team here, that's only a team that's running on half-octane. What we need to really be running on to be running on full-octane is we need to also be healthy. So what do I mean by health? Patrick Lencioni would talk about, here's these five indicators of health, and I just want to go over those real quick. So these would be the five indicators of a healthy team. Number one, minimal politics. You'll notice I didn't say no politics or zero politics, because politics is all around us, but when I talk about politics, here's what I'm talking about. Zero, I'm sorry, minimal self-serving agendas. We've all got them. We've all got self-serving agendas, we've all got our self-serving preferences, and what we want to do is try and minimize that as much as we can when it comes to our teams, which gets us to our next indicator of a healthy team. Is a healthy team is one that has minimal confusion, which means we know with the utmost clarity, with the utmost certainty, why we exist, how we're supposed to behave. The city manager was talking earlier about kind of these rules of engagement, how we behave, how we treat one another. That is a very key component. And you'll notice if you get the first two right, that if we get the first two right of minimal confusion and minimal politics, that it leads to the next three, which is high performance or high productivity, low attrition, and high morale. And when we talk about attrition, we're talking about keeping and retaining our rock stars. And that's the goal. That's the goal, is we already know we've got a body of incredibly healthy, I'm sorry, incredibly smart people. What we want to do, and what I'm here to do today, is to do something that will hopefully add a little bit of value to the health of this team, so that we enhance and minimize our politics as much as we can, again, our self-serving agendas, so that we minimize any type of confusion, that we get it all aligned around maybe this idea of learning and understanding and communicating with one another. And then the mere byproduct of that is going to be increased morale, increased productivity. Because when it's all said and done, it's all about productivity. It's all about getting stuff done. This is what the city is here to do, is to get stuff done. The two frameworks that my company works off of are these two frameworks. Number one, a strengths-based approach, where we look, where we would look at the city council and say, what are the things that make the city council great? Where are you most talented? Where are you most gifted? And focus on that to get more of that, so that we, and aim it towards a common purpose. As opposed to the typical way is we look at what's wrong with us and how do we fix it? That's just, what the research shows is that's just not an effective approach. And then the NOx model we use is organizational health. So today, we're mostly going to be focusing on this idea of health. So I want to throw this out to the city council again. So in fact, if we can maybe take away the PowerPoint just a second, if you don't mind. And I want to look at the city council here, and I want to see you, and I want to hear from the city council. What would cause you to follow somebody? What would cause you to say, okay, I'm going to roll up my sleeves, I'm going to give my blood, my sweat, my toil, my tears? Why would I choose to follow somebody? What would they, what would they have to give you? In other words, another way to look at this, and Gallup posed this question, is what are your needs? What do followers need? And, you know, when you look at most books, or you go to most training workshops that have anything to do with leadership, most of it tells you this is how you need to be, or this is what you need to know, but it doesn't spend a whole lot of time focusing on what is the end user need? Because the reality is, we're not leaders unless we've got people following us and going the direction that we would like them to go. So I'm going to throw this out to the city council. What do you think are the four basic needs of every follower? Because Gallup set out to answer this question, and they did, and they were able to distill it down to four, four, four basic needs. But I want to hear from you. What would somebody give you before you made that conscious decision, I'm going to give of myself to follow you? Council?
What about the ability to listen?
Okay, you'd want somebody that would listen to you, and not just like hear you, actually, and by the way, what would indicate to you, Mayor, that somebody actually heard you? That somebody actually took the time to listen to you?
Well, if they're willing to follow, obviously, they've been listening.
Yeah.
It's one thing, listen and take it in, as opposed to listening through one ear and not the other.
100%. Yeah, it's a great indicator of somebody that listens to you, when there's actually a follow-through with what has been asked. Huge indicator. City council, what else would be an indicator that maybe you've been deeply heard or listened to?
Sorry, Sharon, you want to go first?
Okay, so this is the question, what we need from a leader for whom we choose to follow?
Yeah, so before we skip to, well, I know we started with that. Mayor Talamontes brought up being listened to. How would you know you've been listened to?
I would say the person is respectful. I trust that person, you know, that person is honest, there's an exhibition of integrity. And I was supposed to give four, right? I think that's four.
Yeah, and you don't need to give all four, just, yeah, and indicate that you brought out trust, respect, we've heard Mayor Talamontes say, I'd want to know that I've been listened to, that I've been heard. And so you've touched on that. So yeah, we've got a few there. Outstanding. Thank you so much for that.
If I may, in addition to what my colleagues have said, in terms of leadership, I would want to see vision. I don't have to agree with everything that my leader wants to do, but I do want to see that we're rowing in some direction. So for me, that's something that I look for in deciding who I, who I support, who I follow. Is there some ends that we're trying to achieve?
Love that. You guys are all nailing it, by the way. Haven't even revealed it, and you guys are already nailing this. Well done. Who else might I hear from?
Councilmember Frutos, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Frutos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I go for the body language, the eyes, the connectivity, if this person is really sharing and exchanging my viewpoints with his or her viewpoints, and how I'm connecting with them on a human, you know, touchy-feely kind of, where we're really in tune on the agenda item that we're discussing, and this person definitely is empowering me to learn and not belittling me, but I can feel it through his body language, through his eye contact, that we're definitely, you know, on a mutual playing field as I'm following him or her in dealing with whatever project or agenda that I'm working on.
I think that is a wonderful point, because I think when somebody does, you know, 80% of communication is nonverbal, and when somebody takes the time to invest that communication, that type of nonverbal communication into, and you know it, as human beings, we are wonderful being able to detect when we're connecting and when we're not, that it really sounds like what you're saying is that indicates that you care about me, that you actually have, have a care and a desire to want to be there. Thank you for that, Councilmember Frutos. Anyone else?
Councilmember Anthony.
Councilmember Anthony.
Just a basic history with that person. I mean, you know, somebody who's new, you're not going to know if they're respectful, or if they're listening, or if they're a good leader, until you've seen them in action, until you've interacted a number of times, right? It's not just one or, once or twice. You know, it has to be a consistent basis over a period of time, and I'm not saying it has to be forever, but, you know, a length where you can make that value judgment.
Yeah, I love that, that there's this history, there's this consistency, there's this track record that I can see. All right, you folks are absolutely nailing this. So here, so basically Gallup was one of the first companies to ask this question. They asked about, back in 2010, and they were able to distill those answers, and they asked about 10,000 people, and they were able to distill those answers down to four common needs that every follower has. And I'll submit to you that these aren't just followers, that your brother and your sister to the left and right of you on this council, they have the same needs. They have the same needs, and you actually heard them come, you heard them say it, because when we asked, what is it you would need before you say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to follow you? That's what they needed. So here's the four basic needs, and let's see how close all of you came. If we can pop up the PowerPoint again? Need number one is going to be trust. And here's what I mean by trust. Trust is not just honesty and truth, and here's why. It's part of it. It's a big part of trust. But I'll give you an example. If you look at social media, are there a lot of people out there that are honestly telling you what they feel? Yeah, they are, they're honestly telling you what they feel, and they're being truthful about it, they're being 100% truthful about that. But would you follow them? Are they maybe saying things in a way that would cause you to not follow them, that would cause you to be repelled by them, maybe by... Maybe by how they're saying it, the fact that maybe they're not listening to you. I'll submit to you that trust is not just truth and honesty. That the best definition of trust I can give this body right here is that it is building the confidence of another person. That when you take the time to build the confidence of another human being. That if this, that if this body, the city council takes the time to build the confidence of one another. Um, place value on each other's ideas um and their values and the idea, the ideas that we bring to the table. That's trust, building the confidence of another human being. Number two, we heard that, we uh we heard uh council uh council member Springer bring that up. I need, I need to feel like I'm trusted and respected. Compassion, that idea again, and I I think that really came out in council member Sprutos when he uh when he was talking about body language. Um, compassion, there's two words there, by the way. Calm means with, passion means pain. A compassionate person is somebody who's willing to walk through the pain with you. I'm not going to ask you to do something that I myself am not willing to do. Um, if I see you're having a bad day, I'm going to come in and I'm going to check in on you and make sure that you're okay. That's a compassionate team. Next, stability. Really goes to what was said earlier about this idea of history. There's a history, there's a match between what you say you believe and what we actually do. That you're a rock, I can count on you, you are consistent, you are stable, you are true, you can get me the resources that I need. Um, that is a mark of stability. And then finally, and we heard this, when we heard the word vision, hope, hope. Now, this is what hope is not. Hope is not looking at twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And as we go into some of the challenges of twenty twenty two and sitting there and saying, man. Stuff really sucks or stuff is really rough. I sure hope things get better. That is not hope. That is not hope. Hope is this, when you paint a picture that is idealistic. Yet it is true. And it's one that I can't achieve by myself. I've actually got to paint this picture and invite other people to come join me. And where people are saying, and they look at that picture and they they face the brutal facts and assess, hey, this is where we currently are right now. But they paint a picture of idealism and truth. Um, then people are willing to roll up their sleeves and put skin in the game. Trust, compassion, stability and hope. Those are the four things that if there's one thing that we can bring that would add value and health to this body, it would be those four right there. So if the, this is what the end in mind looks like. If this is what great leadership and a great team looks like, is one that trusts each other. That is compassionate with one another, that provides stability for one another and provides an idea and a sense of hope with one another. What's the one thing that prevents us from getting their counsel? We heard it earlier. What is it? What is that one thing that prevents us from getting there? And this is, by the way, and this is not unique to the council. This is every single team. This is your enemy right here. What is it?
Ego.
It is ego. We all got one. You all need one. We all need one. We've all got one. I've got one. You are sitting right where you are right now because you have an ego. I'm sitting right here right now because I have an ego or I'm standing here right now. We all have one. It is absolutely essential when it comes to survival. And this is a lot of stuff we don't talk about when it comes to leadership. And and followership is we got to understand how ego works and how it can work against us as well. And so when I talk about ego, so you are a hundred percent right. Ego is the enemy of every team and it is not just Burbank's team. It is every team battles and deals with us. All the way back to the most important team you'll be a part of is your family. And if you don't think ego creeps its way into our family, we're fooling ourselves, right? Because it it absolutely does. So here's what I mean by ego. It is this right here. It is self-centered ambition. Uh, ego wants what it wants and it just goes after what it wants. It sees it, it wants it, it goes after it, and that's what it pursues. And so ego is going to manifest itself in three very key components of our lives. Number one, um, when we ambitiously pursue something, when we see something we want, we're going to go after it. Um, the other place where ego in our life is going to manifest is when you succeed. Because when you succeed, and you all have, you've all succeeded and you will again. Who does the, who does your ego love to credit with your success?
Yourself.
It is yourself, bingo bongo. It is yourself. Ego loves to credit ourselves. Um, either when I do it individually or even, you know, as a team, when we do it, we love to credit ourselves. But when you fail, because this is the other third area that ego manifests itself in our lives, when you fail. And you most certainly have, and you most certainly will again. When you fail, who does ego love to blame?
Others.
Everybody else. And even if there's nobody to blame, even if there's absolutely no one else to blame. Ego is going to do stuff like this. This is how ego works. It'll say, ah, the timing just wasn't right. You know, the system was rigged, the system's against me. It will use all these justifications. So ego is our enemy. So let's look at how it works, why it's there in the first place. So, this is the human brain. Again, I'm going to throw this out to council. I I want to hear from the uh members that are out there in uh the cyber universe there. What is the number one function of this brain?
To analyze information?
Okay, so I I heard Mayor Talamont say to analyze information and what uh I I heard someone else. Who was that?
I think that was me. I was saying self-preservation.
Self-preservation, okay, yeah. We like to think that our minds are, because we are the only animal on God's green earth that can rationally think through things. And we can think long-term implications and consequences. We would think that is what its sole purpose is. Its primary main purpose actually is self-preservation, to keep you alive. And here's the other thing we don't talk about. It wants to burn as few calories as possible doing so. It doesn't want to waste a lot of energy. It it wants to get what it want, gets uh keep you alive and it wants, it wants to burn as few calories as possible. Because what do you think it wants to save its calories for? What do you think the brain wants to save its calories for?
For for danger, for thinking, for the winter. There's so many things to protect yourself that you need calories for.
It's the fight or flight syndrome.
The fight or flight, yeah. Fight or flight, the things I need to go pursue, the things I gotta go after. That's what it wants to save its energy. That's why we get so easily distracted. You know, when you're in a, you're in a lecture hall and somebody's just lecturing you to death? And you can check out really easy and what you'll do is you'll go to something that's more useful for your survival and you'll go to your cell phone. That's how easy it is. And so um, we've got to be aware of that. And so the brain really, for all intents and purposes, is and and it sounds terrible to say it this way, but it really is. The brain is a lazy, self-centered organ. It really are. It really is. It's phenomenal for human survival, but it's terrible for teams. It's terrible for teams because it's lazy and self-centered. And teams require hard work and giving of yourself for others. So it's 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 kind of a conundrum that we're in. So let's kind of look at how the brain works and why it's designed this way. You're all spot on. Um, we need this for our survival and there's two parts of your brain. The first part, right smack dab in the middle. Is your limbic system. This is the seat of all memory, the seat of all uh all emotion. Uh, this is what I would call the child of your brain. This is where it wants, the limbic system wants what it wants. This is where the ego is, this is where it pursues what it wants and it's going to go after it and not a whole lot's going to get in its way. Then you have this right here, the prefrontal cortex. The prefrontal cortex is what I would call the adult of the brain. Um, this is where all rational, logical, independent thought comes in, where I can think long-term implication and consequences. Where I can think about how my words and actions might actually impact and affect another human being next to me or around me. Um, that's that part of their brain. And by the way, what age do you think that part of the brain? Well, let's take the first one, the limbic system. What age do you think that becomes fully developed? The limbic system.
I'm gonna guess eight or nine years old.
Okay, younger. Who else wants to take a crack?
Four.
Okay, four? Anyone else? The minute you're born. What's that?
Almost immediately because like a baby cries when the baby's hungry.
There you go. That's it. When the ba- the baby cries, it wants what it wants, it's hungry, once its diaper changed, it is immediate. It's immediate. Um, that's why it's so easy like to frighten, loud noises can frighten a baby if it hears it all kind of, it could be asleep and it would shudder and it would cry and it would wake up. No, that part of the brain is a hundred percent developed the minute you come out because it's, that part is designed and wired for survival. What age do you think that prefrontal cortex, that rational, logical part of your brain, when's that fully developed?
Twenty-four.
It's not for years.
Some people you would swear never. Right? We've all met them, right? Um, you're you're about spot on. Who who said that, by the way? That was Vice uh Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said twenty-four. Is that right?
It is. You're like right at the average there because it's about twenty-five for men and ladies, as usual, you're better than us. Uh, you're, it's it's twenty-three for women. So uh, it that that's how long it takes for this to develop. And again, remember I made that kind of tongue-in-cheek comment. Sometimes we we could swear we've never met somebody who's full, who had, where it hasn't fully developed. And the reality is many, in many ways, it hasn't. Because how many classes or how many schools have you been to where they've actually talked about, this is how the brain works? And we are the only creature that can learn to moderate and use this part of our brain to moderate our emotions and what we want and what our impulses are. There's not a whole lot, uh, a lot, lot of teaching and training that goes into that. So everything that we see, we are incredibly sensory creatures, everything that we see, hear, smell, taste and touch. Must first go through that spinal cord. It gets perceived, it goes through that spinal cord and it's got to go first into that limbic system. Which means you are first going to experience the emotion. Before anything else, you will experience the emotion and you'll remember it too. So if somebody says something that's causes you to get defensive or annoyed or frustrated or angry. And I know no member of this team has ever done that to one another. That's happened, right? We're dealing with members of the human race. This is what's going to happen. That when that happens, you are first going to experience the emotion and boy, are those emotions powerful? And it can completely overwhelm that prefrontal cortex. But here's the thing. We're the only animal on God's green earth that can use the front part of our brain to manage the emotional egocentric part of our brain. No other animal can do it. And because we have that capacity. We have a responsibility to use that, especially when it comes to a team. And you heard me say, by the way, the most important member of the team, uh, the most important team that you will be a member of, what is it, folks?
Your family.
It is our family. It is our family, one hundred percent. And it's really important that as a body, as a city council, that we treat each other as a family. I know we've met some dysfunctional families out there. Right? That those those exist. Um, but the whole goal is to get as tight and strong and cohesive and high performing as possible. So here's the irony of this whole thing. This brain that is so good at keeping you alive, it is so essential for our survival. It is absolutely horrible for teams. It is absolutely a horrible system for social relationships. But let me throw this your uh your way to kind of consider this for just a moment. I would assume that there are people on city council here that are either married or in a relationship with somebody. Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
Yep.
Okay, so let me ask you this. If if, when you were at your closest. Your most intimate, when I say intimate, I mean like your closest where you feel like things are just right in the universe. We're balanced, we're connected, we are in in alignment with one another. I know that the person on my side has my back. Not a knife in it, they actually have my back. Um, and that we're in a really, really good place and we just got the feels, everything feels right. I trust this person. I I I feel uh kind around this person. This person makes me want to be kind. They do kind things for me. That when you're at your absolute best, didn't it first require you to do this? Didn't at some point in your relationship, you have to face the fear? Didn't at some point in your relationship, you had to maybe take a risk, you know, have that conversation I didn't want to have? It uh, didn't you also maybe have to face some discomfort, have that uncomfortable conversation? Face some awkwardness. Face some pain, either emotional or physical. Face some degree of sadness. Be vulnerable with one another. Actually, maybe you face some of the embarrassment and maybe even face some of the shame. Your brain wants to keep you away from every one of these things. Every one of these, because it's about survival, it's about your comfort and it doesn't want you to go there. But again, those of you that are in that are in a relationship, didn't you have to first face some of this before you got to the feels? Before you got to that really good place where we were strong and tight and cohesive. We actually had to do that, which means having some of the uncomfortable conversations, giving up a little bit of me for my brother and sister to the left and to the right of me. Again, this system is phenomenal for social, or is for survival, but it is terrible for social relationships. And what we do is this brain will, when you're offended by something that somebody says. Or we get defensive about what somebody says or does, whether it be an idea or or maybe if we thought we were slighted in any way. Our brain is going to resort to its absolute base. It's going to resort to fight or flight, or when it comes to interacting with one another. Violence or silence. And here's what I mean by that. Here would be an example of verbal violence. Uh, when you go into like labeling, name-calling. I mean, none of us have ever slipped into that, right? With our spouses or or with those that we love or even anybody, we've never slipped into. That's just dumb. That's a dumb idea. That's horrible. We've all slipped in that, into that verbal violence where we'll label, name-call and attack. That's verbal violence. And then there's some of us that might slip into um silence. And this is what silence looks like. Masking, withdrawing, avoiding. Prevent pretending nothing, we know that there's something happening. We know that something's wrong with relationship, but we don't say anything. We kind of pretend like it's nice and smooth. Like the Mississippi River that looks really nice and smooth. But how many people do you see swimming in the Mississippi River? Nobody, because down below is this raging torrent of dysfunction. And so we're like, I don't want to go there. I don't want to go there. And so your your mind will slip out, uh, slip back into silence. Teams that slip into that are falling for a sucker's choice. And what I want to encourage this body to do is to never fall into the sucker's choice, that it's this either or with one another. That instead I want you to it to engage in a process that would be commensurate with dialogue. Where I listen to deeply understand the other person. Where I, I'm not in it to win it. Discussions are about winning, where I'm not in it to win it, but I'm actually in it to learn from the other person. Um, and to learn what is the best way for this city to move forward. Ego is the enemy. It is not just the enemy of Burbank City Council, it's the enemy of every single team. Your team's back at home. Um, our team, our sports teams, if you didn't think you uh haven't seen ego, go watch uh some football for a while. You're going to see plenty of it. So, you know, this is not the necessarily the best way to win friends and influence people because I've come in here and called you all a bunch of egocentrics. And you are, and so am I, and so is every other person in this world. And so what we got to do is maybe find a way to manage that. But here's the first thing that you need, we need to know. How would you even know? When you're being egocentric? What do you think? I throw, I want to throw that out to the city council. How would you even know when you're being egocentric?
Usually when you're talking.
All right.
Well, also, but also like I statements, um, my thinking, well, here's where I'm coming from. Stuff like that, where you bring your own values and judgment uh to the conversation.
Now, was that uh council member, was that Schultz or uh? Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have the uh the faces up, so I'm just going by voice here. Um, yeah, so let let me show you what the ego will do with that one, with what you just said. So if you came up to me and you're like, hey, Jim, you know, you're just using a lot of I statements, maybe you should change the pronouns a little bit. Here's what the ego will do. The ego will do stuff like, hey, you know what? I'm just using a lot of I statements and I'm telling stories about me because I'm trying to connect with you. I'm just trying to connect. This is, this is all, I mean, I know it may sound like I'm doing this for me, but I'm really just doing this for you. See how the ego will do that? So what what else would be an indicator of you being egocentric? You see, because you start to see that the, that external sources aren't going to start to tell you anything because the ego is going to find a way around it. What else do you think, Mike? How how would you, how would you know when you're being egocentric? Would you believe it if somebody told you?
So this is uh council member Schultz. Um, what I would say is. Whenever I start to feel like that 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 deep emotion, right? Like like extreme compliment or flattery or um. Uh, uh, you know, just anger, right? Or frustration. I at that point, it's going through the limbic system, right? So you're getting into that fight or flight thing. I'm either really happy because someone has said. Something that makes me feel good, so the ego is fully activated, or I'm getting defensive because maybe they've said something I didn't like or found offensive.
Very well done. You just nailed it. You just nailed it. Because here's the thing, we will never accept that we're egocentric if we're told by somebody. You know, if somebody comes up to you and says, hey, you're being an egocentric jerk, what's your first response going to be? No, I'm not. No, I'm not. You're the jerk. That's exactly what we're going to do. That's what the eagle will do. It'll play this this game. And so the only way you'll be able to figure this out is from inside. And so this right here. This right here. Have you, any of you ever felt these emotions? Just kind of look at this for a second. Have you ever been defensive or air, you know, feel a little cocky, a little sure of yourself, a little arrogant? Um, alienated, like you don't belong, gotten indifferent and apathetic. Got flat out angry or. Got flat out angry or depressed? Or maybe irritable with one another? Guys been there before?
Several times.
So have I, lots of times. Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, is our is our red flag warning system that's been wired in each and every one of us. That when we feel this, we're thinking, feeling and behaving. Egocentrically, which means I'm just caring about me. And my wants and my needs. Now, don't misunderstand me. I'm not suggesting that you don't have a right to feel this way. There are things that people will do that will trigger us to feel these emotions. You can't help it. And if you're feeling that way when somebody says or does something to you. That's okay, congratulations, you're not a cyborg. Welcome to the human race, that is an awesome thing, that's evidence that you're a human being, that is great, that's great news. I'm not saying that you don't have a right to feel these emotions. What I'm suggesting. Is that we as leaders, as leaders in this community, as a team of city leaders. We can't afford to remain there. We can't stay there. We've got to get out of it. Um you know, we talked about babies earlier, right? You know, babies when they want their diapers changed, we've got to change it, well. When bad things happen to us or we get depressed or we don't get what we want, or we get angry because we don't get what we want. It's 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 like we've gone into our poopy diaper. And what happens if diapers don't get changed, ladies and gentlemen?
Baby cries more.
The baby's gonna cry more, okay, so I'm, I'll I'll maybe even cry and whine more, so I'll just stay in my little poopy diaper, right? And what else, what else starts to happen when that, we just sit in our diaper?
You smell bad.
It stinks. It's horrible and is it just stink for you or or who else?
All around you.
Everybody else, absolutely, so it's okay, that's gonna happen, but we gotta change our poopy diaper every once in a while.
I I love how professional this meeting is remaining, this is great.
So we've got to change that, we cannot stay there. We cannot remain there as leaders, we've got to be able to change. And we're the only animal that can do it. So these emotions. These emotions here, are these either good or bad? What do you guys think?
They're human.
They're neither.
They're neither.
Yeah, they're human.
Yep, it's part of the human condition. It is us. They're neutral, they're neither good nor bad. The only thing that's going to determine its its goodness or its badness is going to be what we choose to do with it. So um look at emotions instead as a signpost. And you're gonna feel this among each other as a team, these emotions are gonna pop up, it's just a signpost. And all it is, is just a signpost that says, hey. Something that you value. Has either been met. Or not met. That's all it is. That's all an emotion is, when things are happy and wonderful and beautiful and I'm feeling all the unicorns and the warm fuzzies. Um and everything's great and peaceful and harmonious in my life, my values are being met. But if it's not, if I'm experiencing some of these other emotions like anger, arrogance, defensiveness, irritability, depression, sadness. That is my indication that something I deeply value has not been met. And so. I'm gonna throw this out to you, what are some good emotional management strategies? That I guarantee some of you already use, but what are some emotional management strategies? That you can use and may maybe you already use. So that you manage. These emotions that you that we manage this ego, what are some things that you already use?
Uh are you saying what what we do when we find ourselves feeling one of these emotions?
Yeah, what can we, what can we do to pull ourselves out of that?
I guess you can learn to control it.
Yeah, how?
No, I think ask why it's happening and then um manage it from there.
That is a gr- that is a great idea, uh council member Springer. Yes, asking questions. Why, why is this happening? Why is this bothering me? Why am I so irritated? Again, we're the only animal that can ask those types of questions, zebras don't. They never will, they're not going to. Um yes, so yes, I can stop and just ask my question, why is this making me so sad? Why is this irritating me? Why do I feel alienated? That is a, that is a great way to s- to just pause and not be consumed by that emotion. What else? Any other ideas?
Well, you well, you mentioned taking a pause, th- this is Vice Mayor Anthony, uh you know, taking a break, taking a breather. You know, stopping, talking for a second. I I think really helps me. Uh and and you know, to be able to. To have that moment and realize, well, first, A, to know that you're feeling those emotions and try to figure out. Which emotion it is that you're feeling, because sometimes it can all jumbled up and then have that time to ask those questions.
Love that, so if if what I'm hearing you say is sometimes just, sometimes physically removing yourself from it. Um again, stop talking and just removing yourself, saying, hey, maybe things have gotten a little heated right now, I need to take a walk, we'll come back and we'll reconvene, we'll talk about this later. So and if you can't leave, if you can't physically walk away, which sometimes that can't happen here in city council. Even simple things like readjusting in your chair. Just any type of physical movement causes the brain to stop and pause, not get consumed by the by the emotion anymore. And I can now redirect the prefrontal cortex of my mind to start thinking my way through. Um how do I make sure this thing that I value gets met or work towards it? And anyone else have any other ideas? You guys have nailed two really, really good ones out of five.
You know, I I think fear has is the root of a lot of um emotion and. To ask oneself, you know, why? I heard an express, uh an expression a long time ago that fear and aggression sleep in the same bed and um. I. Sometimes remind myself of that.
Yeah, yeah, and often and oftentimes, one of the things that we fear the most is not being in control. And and when somebody challenges us, that we we have a sense that loss of control. Yeah, that that fear is is huge, huge. Any other ideas that of things that you can do, emotional management strategies that have worked for you? That you might share with the council? So here's a couple I'd like to root, uh go ahead, I think I heard someone.
Sorry, yeah, this is council member Schultz, I just try and smile. Smile through anything.
Yes, absolutely, so let's talk about these for a second, we're gonna get to smile, we're gonna get to every one of these, one thing we didn't mention is breathe. Breathe, take that deep breath in through your nose, out through your mouth, now here's what I don't want you to do in city council. Don't do one of those, that probably wouldn't go off really well with either each other or the city, members of the city. Um but yeah, that deep breath, because you're getting oxygen into your brain. And when you get oxygen in your brain, I can think and I can figure out ways and I don't get consumed with emotion anymore, just that deep breath. The next thing. Value identification, what is it that I do value and then how do I make sure that that gets uh that value gets met? We've kind of talked about that, we're gonna dive deeper into it in a second here. Asking questions as was brought up earlier. Uh physically moving. Another thing that seriously that I'll do to maybe even bring it uh attention, like I I wear like this pla- plastic uh rubber bracelet uh that's on me. Sometimes even just pinching yourself, moving or snapping yourself, snaps your brain out of it just enough, quit focusing on the negative emotion. Because you can't focus on pain and negative emotion all at the same time. And then the other strategy that I would suggest that was just brought up is smiling. We know from research that when you smile, it is impossible to manifest negative emotions. Smiling literally changes the physical component of your body and if you can't, and if you can't muster up a way to do it all on your own, you can take a pen or a pencil. And do that. Even that little simple action, what we know from research is that a- actually changes the chemical makeup of your body that makes it feel more positive. And it can thrust us out of just staying in our own egocentric mind. Those are all simple strategies and I've uh every one of you in your packet have been handed these emotional management strategies. So I wa- wanted you to have this just so you have some great reminders of things that you can go to, because this stuff is going to happen. It is going to happen to this team, there's no way it's not. So here's the last thing I want to leave you with regarding ego. Every decision that you make, you have an audience. At home, right here in uh city council chambers, among one another, uh among the executive staff, among uh the city and and the uh the population out here. This uh citizenry. They're all judging every one of our actions and our decisions and our behaviors. By valuing it one of two ways, either what we did is something that was ignorant. Or it's wise. That's what they're looking at. Now, I'm venturing to guess, most of us want to be viewed as someone who is wise. Uh someone that knows the cross section between knowledge and what to do with that knowledge and are we using that knowledge to benefit other people? The only thing, what is the one thing that's going to be the determining factor? When it comes to our decisions and how we act and how we interact with one another as a team? What is going to be the linchpin that's going to determine whether or not people view us as being ignorant or wise? As individuals and as a team, what's the linchpin? It's this right here. How we manage this. It's how we manage this as a team. And this is hard stuff, it's stuff we never talk about as a team. And and to recognize as a team, I'm not going to be able to point out and say, vice Vice Mayor Anthony, you're being uh you're being egocentric and and know that that's not gonna work. That's not gonna work, that's got to come from within. But if we're a team that's giving each other elements of trust, compassion, stability and hope. That's gonna be an avenue where people are gonna be more likely to be aware of that. So I said, one of the emotional management strategies that we can use is values identification. Know what it is you value. So I want to throw this out to the city council, so go, if we can go ahead and remove the uh. PowerPoint right now? One of the things I. Mentioned was values. As leaders. Do you think it's important for your followers to know what it is that you value?
Yeah, I think so.
Why so? Why, why do you think that's important?
That's what they base on following you or not.
Yeah, and most people want to please you.
Yeah.
Most people do want to please the people to the left and to the right of them, or if somebody's asking them to do something. There's just a lot of times they're they're confused, they don't know what it is maybe that that you want. So yeah, it's really important that people know what it is that you value and that you talk about it. Do you think that it's important that if you're on a team? That you should know what everybody else values? And if so, why might that be important?
I feel that.
Go ahead, Councilman Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mara, I I feel that as a council of five, especially after the election's over. And we got that, you know, eighteen month period, that this is who the people elected. I feel one of my values is that workability amongst the five leaders to reassure. The community, the constituents, the business owners, that the five people. Are really representing nonpartisan local issues. That is going to better the lives of its residents as we continue to, you know, move forward policy for the city manager to run the city.
So ca- council member Frutos, what I think I'm hearing you say too is that there's probably gonna be a whole lot of values that we can agree on.
Yes.
Yeah, and if we focus more on that and aim our talents and our values and and our beliefs towards that, we're gonna have a greater outcome.
Instead of focusing on our differences.
One hundred percent. So now, do you think it's, so do you guys, do you see, does it start to become apparent that? Um it's important that you got to know what you value, so you know when you're being triggered. Uh it's important for your uh teammates to know it, what it is that you value. It's important for everyone to know what it is that you value and for you to know what e- every other person values well, so you can meet those needs. So here's what I want you to do, every one of you have been given a stack. Of values cards. This is what you have in front of you right now. And if you would take those out, there's probably about, I think about twenty eight of these. Yeah, first of all, does everyone have one? Everyone have them? Okay, awesome, I see them pop up. So here's what I want you to do. We are gonna do, we're gonna step into the realm that most leaders have not taken the time to do and most teams have not taken the time to do. Is to actually identify what are my top values? Because when I know my top values, I'm gonna know when they're being met and when they're not being met, I'm gonna know this is what's triggered me. And now I know how to say, I can figure out, okay, if I value, let's say, for example, loyalty. Um and. I can go look at my values when somebody has maybe frustrated me and I go, oh, that's why I'm really mad, that's why I'm really upset, it's this. So here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna separate these value cards into two piles, this is the first part of this exercise. What I want you to do is take these and separate them into two piles. The first pile is what are my non-negotiables? What is the value that I just got to have, can't live without them, got to have them, these are very, very important values. The other pile is, they sound great, they're nice, I'm not against them, but I can take it or leave it. It's just not that, it's not as important to me as these other ones. So that's the first part of this exercise is just separate these values into two piles. Why don't you go ahead and start doing that? Are you all done, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Excellent.
I do, uh I was a facilitator for team building back in my twenties.
So you got this down.
Corporation, yeah, and I went, I went through Leadership Burbank, we did a a program somewhat like this.
Excellent, did you go through it or were you one of the facilitators in it?
Uh I was a graduate, Leadership Burbank, class twenty eighteen.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's diswell, right?
You gotta throw me out now.
Not at all, not at all, it's always a good reminder, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I'll be honest, when they said that we weren't bringing somebody in from the staff to do it, I was like, oh, okay, what's gonna happen now? Amazing, man, this is, this has been a great workshop so far, I'm loving it.
Great. Mr. Frutos, you're all good? I see they're looking relaxed, so that's an indicator to me you're, you've got it, okay. Mr. Schultz? Excellent. Uh Ms. Springer? Okay, excellent.
Don't pressure me now.
No, I'm not pressuring you at all, you take your time.
You said you wanted two piles, huh?
Yeah, if you hate me now, you're gonna hate me in a few minutes.
Break it up into a four pile. Okay, I'm ready to go.
All right, good, so you got your two, so everyone, it looks like they got their two piles, here's what I want you to do. Take the pile that was your take or to leave it. Um they sound nice, but I can, I can take or leave it, push it aside, you don't need them anymore. Now take the pile that you do have. And again, it didn't matter how big this pile is, it doesn't matter uh for 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 now, so if one was bigger than the other, usually it is. Um what I want you to do is take the pile that you do have, narrow it down to your top ten. Just narrowed, narrow this down now to your top ten, what are your top ten non-negotiable values? Vice Mayor Anthony, I gotta know, since you've kind of done something similar to this, how many did you have? How many did you have left?
Uh to remain with?
Yeah, how many did you have to remain with? How big was your pile?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Down to ten.
Okay.
It it's funny, it changes over time, like I did this, what, almost four years ago?
Yeah, it's a great thing to revisit.
Yeah, the values have changed, yeah, not not a lot, but.
Right.
There's a couple here that I never thought, oh, wow. There's a couple here that I never thought, oh, wow.
I'll see your ten and raise you.
Did you get it? You down to ten? All right, good job. Well done, well done. All right. Councilmember Schultz, I see you've got it. Councilmember Springer, how are we doing there?
I think I got it.
You think you got it? Excellent. Councilmember Frutos? Okay. And Councilmember Schultz, did I see a, a thumb up earlier? Okay, uh, two, I saw two thumbs up. Excellent. Okay. And Vice Mayor, uh, Anthony?
I've had hardly his last two, man.
Like I said, you're gonna hate me in a minute here.
Ten.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Now what I want you to do, narrow it to your top five. Break it down to your top, what are your top five non-negotiable? I gotta have them. Can't live without them. Values. These are what are gonna drive most of my decision and the way I want to be in this world. Good, okay. Councilmember Springer, it looks like you're good. Okay. Councilmember Schultz? Councilmember Frutos? Okay, awesome. And Councilmember, uh, or Vice, Vice Mayor? Very good? Okay, great. So, um, not the easiest thing to do in the world, but again, you guys have stepped into the realm where most teams have not stepped into where I as a leader know my values. Now here's the first thing before we share them what they are, because I, I want to hear what everybody's is. Before we do that, make sure you save these. Um, we are gonna, uh, we are gonna create a document for you, so you will have your team values. Uh, at, at least for this year, you are gonna have your team values. The other thing, one of the things I like to do with both my clients and myself, I share them, I, I, I just keep them in my phone. I just put them in my phone in the notes section. It's just a great thing to, to go back to and revert to, because again, this is gonna be this is gonna be the, well, when I know that I'm getting upset, okay, how do I make sure that this value gets met? These are really, really important things to have, so that you can articulate what it is that you need from other people. And also that you, when you're in conflict with any council member, um, or any mem- uh, uh, any person that you're working with, becomes very helpful when you know what their values are and you can approach that conversation from what it is they need, because these values are what you need. So, I wanna go around the room and, uh, who'd you like to start with, Mayor?
Uh, let's see, uh, Con- Councilmember Schultz.
Councilmember Schultz? Will you share with us what your five values are?
All right, I appreciate the chance to be in the hot seat. For me, I would say in no particular order, honesty, humility, altruism, justice, and community.
So honesty, humility, altruism, I feel like I missed one, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, justice.
Justice, and I feel like I'm still missing one of them. Honesty, humility, altruism, justice, and what else?
Community.
Community. Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. Who'd like to go next?
Next up, any volunteers? There we go. Vice Mayor?
I'll go. These were hard, man.
I thought you were, I thought you were a champ at this.
I, hey, just, just gonna explain, it doesn't make it any less in the easier.
It's a good point. It is a good point.
It was hard then and it's hard today, huh?
Yeah. It's always tough. It's just a change. That's the thing I was saying. Years ago, there was stuff that I wouldn't have put in here.
Yeah, and there was probably some that were really hard to let go, I would assume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so for me, it was knowledge, love, altruism, emotional well-being, and family.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
All right, um, number one for me is loyalty. Number two, honor. Number three, dignity. Number four, passion. And number five is honesty.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Um, spirituality, religion, honesty, emotional well-being, health, and creativity.
Great. Thank, I'm gonna read it back, make sure I got it. So spiritual, uh, well be- uh, spirituality and religion, I'm sorry. Honesty, emotional well-being, wealth, and, uh, creativity.
Health.
Health, I don't know. All I had to do is just change one letter.
Right.
Health.
And creativity.
And creativity. Got it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So everybody heard health, not wealth, right?
Right. I know wealth was one of them, but you picked health with an H, right?
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Last but not least.
Yes.
Community, honesty, creativity, family, and spirituality.
Spirituality, religion, okay. All right, so as you hear these, so I'm just gonna read them off again. So the mayor is community, honesty, uh, uh, creativity, family, spirituality. Councilmember Schultz is honesty, humility, altruism, justice, and community. Councilmember Springer, spirituality and religion, honesty, emotional well-being, health, and creativity. Vice Mayor Anthony, we've got knowledge, love, altruism, emotional well-being, and family. And Councilmember Frutos, we've got loyalty, honor, dignity, passion, honesty. Even though there are ones that were mentioned that were different, are any of you sitting there going, nah, that whole health thing is terrible? Is anybody going, no, that whole creativity thing? That's, that's, nah, that, that's not gonna work for us as a team. What do you start to see emerge when it comes to this team? With, when you hear these values, I know you didn't have a chance to write them all down, but I'm seeing some distinct patterns here. What, what are you starting to see emerge?
We got commonalities and differences.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, for me personally, there was a bunch that other people said that were on my, like, very last elimination, like they were s- number six and number seven.
Yeah.
So it's so close, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, there's some similarities. I mean, you heard, you heard family come up, you heard community come up a couple times, you heard creativity come up a few times, you heard spirituality and religion and emotional well-being, you heard them kinda cross-blending in one another. You also, like, like you said, Vice Mayor, is that some of these ones that other people mentioned, they just, they just didn't quite make the cut for you, but it was hard to let go. So yeah, you start to see there's a huge bunch of commonality here. There is. And there's, there's not one of these that would be taking away from the team. I can't imagine how so- how health and making decisions, and if somebody values, uh, health, how health would be taking away from the team. I just don't see how, how that would happen. None of these values are gonna take away the team. They're gonna only add value to it. It's only gonna make our team healthier.
You know, it reminds me of, of, you know, meetings in the past where I'll come in to a meeting and have done all my research and asked all these questions, and then I'll hear another council member talk about something else that they dated on their time and their research, and it's something that resonates with me, but it wasn't just in my top tier of what I was gonna bring. And I'm agreeing with them. So it's, it was like number six and number seven on the list, and they brought it and I didn't. But there's no reason why I'm not agreeing with them and, and finding that common ground.
Excellent. Excellent. And that's the thing, if we can be a team that believes in this common ground, this common set of values, that all of these are very good in their own right, they are extremely good, they're extremely valuable to this team. Um, we are more alike. That is what's going to make us much more special, much more productive as a team, because in the end, it's all about performance. It's all about getting stuff done, but we're gonna best get stuff done when we do it in a values-driven way. And again, you have stepped into the realm as a leader that most leaders have not, where they've actually taken the time to actually identify, here's my top values. So I encourage you to save these, reflect on them, save them. Put them on a post-it note on your computer, put them on your phone, I don't care. Share your values with people. This is not something that's just meant to be holding on to yourself in a vacuum. Let them know so that people can meet your needs and then find out and discover what other people's values are. This is a wonderful activity that you could do with, um, with, with your family members, other teams that you're a part of. This is a wonderful activity, so you know what people need, so that you can meet them. And now this becomes the thing where you can identify when I'm getting frustrated, when I'm getting irritated, sad, depressed, now I can check my values and say which one of my values are not being met. And instead of, uh, just staying in the negative emotion, I can now say, how can I make sure that this value gets met? And we've got a team of really, really smart, healthy people that can make that happen. One last thing I wanna do. I would like each one of you to go around, and so, uh, uh, and I'll, uh, Mayor, I'll let you decide who goes first here. I want each of you to go around and tell, uh, each council member, so you're gonna say this to each council member, what is one thing that they do that makes our city better? What is the one thing that each council member does that makes the city better? Who'd you like to go first, Mayor?
Sure, I'll go first.
You wanna go first? Okay.
Um, you know, we all ran, uh, obviously to get elected, and we were fortunate enough to get elected for the betterment, to make the community better. I mean, that's our goal. All five of us have that goal in mind. And, and I seen it, I've, because I've been up here loo- you know, several years that I've seen other people, the way they work, but this council has been working together extremely well. Uh, and our, and our focus is the community. Bottom line. Uh, we set our egos aside, we set our political division aside, and we move forward with, with the same vision. And I know sometimes we have a problem joining the vision that's being portrayed or being discussed. Uh, but the end result is we work together and we move forward for the betterment of the community. So I feel, I feel that all the, uh, my council colleagues have that in mind, that they're working for the betterment of the community. And we come from different perspectives, obviously, right? Uh, so I have to share my perspective. I have to listen to the other four perspectives and see what where we're common ground and move forward.
So Mayor Talamates, I'm gonna challenge you to go even deeper on that. Go around and tell each council member what is one thing each person does that makes this community better? So, we'll, we'll, like, start with, uh, Councilmember Springer. What is one thing that you see her do that makes this city better? Just one thing. Tell her.
Uh, she's very focused on the community in regards to their needs.
Excellent. Tell Mr. Frutos.
He's got, he's got passion and compassion. I mean, I, I, you know, I sense it in the words, his words, and we've been together several years now, a couple of terms. Uh, and every, every time he speaks, I listen because it not only goes here, but it goes here.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
We've been together only a little bit over a year. Uh, and, and, you know, I've been, I've learned from you. And I've, I've kept comments from the community aside, because my dealings with you are different than what I'm being told or what's being portrayed in those blogs. I don't see what's happening in those blogs. I don't go to blogs. So the Vice Mayor, I think we're doing a great job together.
Okay. And, uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Councilmember Schultz came on, like I said, we've only been working the same time as, uh, Vice Mayor Anthony, a little bit over a year. Uh, but as I've gotten to know him, you know, there was a question when he was running. I'm being very honest. And I, you heard it. You know, he's only been here a year, and he wants to run for council. Why doesn't he get involved in boards and commissions before he runs for council? He got elected. People listened to his message and obviously he got elected. And we've been working together for this, like I said, over a year. We've been on common ground the majority of the time, but nonetheless, we agree to disagree and we, we, we move forward.
Vice Mayor, what's one thing that each council member does that makes the team better? Or makes, uh, the city better?
I'll go, I'll go in the reverse order. Uh, so Councilmember Schultz, you and I, we we ran together during the same election. And I watched your ability to learn and process new things in a way I, I'd never seen anybody do. You have uh, an earnest um, thirst for knowledge. And you take what the community is telling you. So many people reach out to us all the, I mean, we get hundreds of emails. And you just amaze me with your ability to take all that in and, and, and process that and understand, um, you know, the bigger picture. It's, it's amazing to me. It's amazing to me. Uh, Councilmember Springer, a few years back, you got rid of your automobile. And to this day, I still see you walking the streets of the city. You have an adept way of simply being present in the community, physically in the community, and talking to people, engaging in a way I've never seen any elected official in my life ever do. Uh, it, it is consistent and it is inspiring. Uh, Councilmember Frutos, you pushed me to think so far outside of my boxes. It is incredible to me. You come from such a different background than I do. And it allows me to really expand my knowledge of understanding of, of what government can do, of what a constituency needs. Um, it has been an incredible learning experience for me, being in this council with you, and I, you know, I'm still, I'm still learning. I'm still learning. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, your, your experience with this city, uh, there's a history there that, I, I mean, you couldn't put it all into a bu- you couldn't put it all into five books. Um, but when I talk to you, and we've had conversations about this, that, and the other thing, and, and you bring with all of those conversations, a, a, a history and a knowledge and an understanding beyond anything that can be taught, beyond anything that can be experienced, it, it is lived through, and it is, um, it is amazing to behold.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Frutos, your turn.
Okay, I'll start with the mayor. A very distinguished experience older city statesman with a lot of tentacles in the community because of his passion for the city of Burbank. From his time as a firefighter to park and recs board, to being on council. A- as I'm out there talking to people and stuff, um, Jess is definitely a very strong pillar of leadership in this community. Uh, Vice Mayor, obviously I'm over, uh, twenty years older than you, but I listen to you a lot because you are the new generation that has come into Burbank for leadership. You do represent um, the younger generation. And I listen to you a lot. I follow you sometimes on social media to see what your viewpoints are. And I look at that as education to help me better understand from your eyes, your passion, your heart of the voices of the newer residents that are out of my disco area but are in your technology, social media area. So I look up to you a lot through your leadership to educate me. And I thank you for that. Um, my colleague Sharon Springer, you are one hell of a passionate person that you take it to that tenth degree on making sure that the little guy, the little person in the community and their voices are heard. in the community, and their voices are heard. And I look up to you for that, because your passion is genuine. You don't do it for a pat on your shoulder. You don't do it because you're going to advance to a higher office. You do it because you go back to your principle that you always talked to me about. What is the, what is the good of the cause? We need to represent everybody, including the little guy. And I admire you for that and all your passion. Nick, you are a very highly educated statesman. And you're, you're very, very, how would I say, you prepare for your agenda items. I also follow you sometimes on social media without violating the Brown Act, to make sure there's nobody else on there. And I listen to you for your viewpoints, because you are the new, the young family that comes to Burbank. So just like the Vice Mayor, I pay attention to you, because there's a big age difference between us. But I learn a lot from your viewpoints, and I appreciate your passion for the city's budget, and making sure we're making responsible decisions. Because I pay close attention to your deliberations. And for that, I thank you, because I learn something new every day from everybody on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Ms. Council, Councilmember Springer, how about you? Why don't we start with you?
Sure. Okay, I'll start with the mayor, Mayor Talamontes. I respect and I value your lifelong experience in Burbank and your knowledge, and also your commitment to family, not just your own, but to other families. And I think the importance of family comes through to you. And I think that's really important for Burbank. Vice Mayor Anthony, I am grateful for your kind-heartedness. And I will learn more about you as we spend more time on council, but I appreciate that. And Councilman Frutos, I appreciate your honesty and your straightforwardness, and I always know where you're coming from. I do. I know that I'm going to get the truth, and I will get your values. And for both you and Mayor Talamontes, I really appreciate your Latino roots. And I think that's a very important perspective for Burbank, and because you carry experiences that the rest of us do not have. And Councilmember Schultz, thank you for your good communication skills and for reaching out to the community with your newsletter. And also to Constantine, excuse me, Vice Mayor Anthony, I know you do too. So there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. And Councilmember Schultz, why don't you bring us home?
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll start in no particular order. So I like to think of us as all the different component pieces of Burbank. And so, Councilmember Frutos, I kind of think of you as Burbank's heart in a lot of ways, because you are someone who genuinely cares about the community. And I'm not talking about the big events, but something that many people inside City Hall know is Christmasy, right? You go out there and you ride with our frontline workers. I mean, you care about everyone in this community, whether they're the city manager, or somebody who just has fallen on some hard times and needs a little bit of help. And I just think, I can, I can sense immediately from the first time I met you, your compassion, and the passion that you bring to the job. Councilmember Springer, you know, you are Burbank's eyes and ears. I agree with something the Vice Mayor said. I don't think anyone's more connected in many ways than you are, really listening to our residents and wanting to bring their voice to City Hall. Vice Mayor Anthony, you are our creative side. I can't say that I agree with you on every point, but what I so appreciate about you is that by you bringing forward new ideas, it causes me to reevaluate my position on things. And okay, why are we, why have we always done it that way? Why can't we do it differently? And as part of a team, I think that that is something really valuable to have, because at least we're having the conversation and thinking that way. And Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd call you Burbank's brain, I don't know, but you, from the moment I've arrived, have wanted to mentor myself and the Vice Mayor, share your years of wisdom and understanding of where Burbank has been, and why that's so important in charting the course for its future. So I am the new guy, but I am very grateful to have all of you in this journey. And I just hope, you know, that I take an awful lot from each of you, and appreciate the relationships we've built.
Burbank City Council, thank you for doing that. That is sometimes a thing that we don't take enough amount of time to do, is to really truly value what each person brings to the table. And one of the things I want to encourage this team to do as it moves forward is to always assume positive intent. Always assume positive intent on the part of your council members. Because as you can see, every one of these values have an extremely high level of positivity related to it. And view each other from those lens of values. This is, this is who each person has professed that they want to be. And you've seen it in action. When you were describing the things that you liked the best, and that you saw them do in the community, it was absolutely expressed through their values. You just didn't have the language to say it before. Now you do. As a team, you all are stepping into a realm that most teams do not take the time to step into, most especially city councils. It's very rare that city councils will do what you've just done right now. So I apply, in fact, give yourself a round of applause on that one. Ms. McFarland, could we pull up one last PowerPoint slide here before we move on to highlighting and adopting the city council documents? I want to leave. Could we skip forward? Yeah, it's not clicking. Or could I do it, could I do it from here? No, okay. We will not be outdone by technology. We'll make this happen. Okay, one more click. I want to leave you with this last quote, before we shift on into the goal setting and also the adopting of some of the documents that we have here. C.S. Lewis once said, "How monotonously alike all the great tyrants and conquerors have been?" How gloriously different are the saints? That's what we've done here today. We've done something that starts to separate you from all the monotonous, monotonously boring way things have always been done. And you're stepping into the realm of being a gloriously different saint. And that's what I want to invite each and every one of you to do as an individual and as a body, as a city council, as you move forward from here, choose to be a gloriously different saint. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to highlighting and adopting the city council documents. So Mayor, one of the things, there's two documents I know that we are going to be going over today. One, we revised. And it's the city council, how we work together as a team. So the draft has been revised a little bit. Some of the language was changed, and some of the purpose and the intent behind this was working together with the city manager and the assistant city manager. We looked at the previous document. We just wanted to put in some language that had a little bit more of that positive intent, like I was talking, talking about, really put some humanity behind it. Not that it didn't before, but just add even more humanity to it, and more of a, more of a strengths approach to it. So a lot of the same things are there. It's just stated a little bit differently. So I'll defer to you, Mayor Talamontes, is we have both there, the drafted revised version, and we've also got the previously adopted one from back in January 27, 2021. So I'll defer to you, Mayor. What would you like to do? Would you like to go over the new document in its entirety? What would you like to do, sir?
Well, there were a lot of changes. Were there...
Technically, there were no changes as far as content. It was just, we organized it differently. And we, basically, we kind of tweaked the language, as Mr. Yule was saying, to put a more positive statement together. So, so, so we didn't remove any of the items. It's just totally rearranged. So that's where, we couldn't redline it. It was impossible to redline. So, but all the content is still there.
One other thing I would add, Mayor, is if you like, I think one of the things that sets, I think, the groundwork is just the brief little preamble. If you want me to read that, I would certainly be willing to do that. But again, I defer to you, sir.
Are my colleagues willing to go with that? Or do we want to do something different? Let's go with that. Go ahead.
Okay. So just reading the preamble, correct, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Above all else, we are a leadership team, working together for the good of our community. Each council member brings a unique set of values, perspectives, and strengths. And when these are collectively aimed toward the common purpose of strengthening our city, then we become a healthy leadership team that models to the rest of our community what it means to thrive. As we work together as a city leadership team, let's commit to one another, our city, our staff, I'm sorry, our city staff and our community, the following key behaviors. And again, as the city manager indicated, the same key behaviors are there. We rephrased some of it, but everything is there from last year. But I think it really sets the tone of...
So can you just mention the highlighted items?
Yeah. So, for example, this, focus on issues that transcend personal agendas. Set goals and make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire community. This one really was a change, a minor change here, like number four. As your fellow council members state their opinions, ideas, and positions, deeply listen to them. Resist the urge to interrupt them. Keep an open heart and mind. Just one of the things I would comment on regarding deep listening, we kind of touched on it a little bit in the beginning. There's a huge difference between active and deep listening. Active listening is if I can give you all the social cues that creates the illusion that I'm listening to. I can nod my head. I can give the, uh huh, mhm, okay. But we've all been in those conversations where somebody's been talking to us, and I'm giving them all those social cues. And then it's your turn to respond, and you don't even know what the heck they just said, because you weren't, you weren't even paying attention. Deep listening, deep listening is really listening with, A, the intent to understand, the intent to learn. You know that you've been deeply listened to, and like you said, people follow through with what you, what you've requested or asked. When people can rephrase or paraphrase what it is that you've said, or they ask further questions of inquiry to get to the heart of what it is that you've said. That's one of the things that I want to encourage this, this council to do, is to truly deeply listen to one another.
Definitely. They'll just make it, make us better.
Absolutely. So those are just a few of the highlights. I can, I can obviously go over a few others. But again, for the most part, the document is very true to its original form. Again, I think it just has more of a, more positive intent, just more human language behind it.
No, it's good. I mean, obviously, we have a copy, so we can always take it home and read it, and kind of really take it in.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Anything else? Well, the Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could I, could I ask Council to simply add a quick change on, on the document, under working together, number six? Not that it would ever happen here, but just thinking back over the past year, where we say, it says, create an environment where your colleagues and staff feel psychologically safe. I'd like to add the phrase, physically and psychologically safe. And then at the end, it says, as though they can express their ideas without fear of being ridiculed, shamed, or hurt. And the only reason I bring that up is because a number of us on this council had some protesters show up at their place of residence. And I wouldn't want any future council member to look back on this past year and think that that is a valid form of expression. I'd like to put that in here now, just so we have it moving forward for the future years to come.
Is it okay?
I, I think that's a tremendous idea. Council, any other ideas or suggestions on that?
Great idea.
Okay. So how I'll make sure that it reads, or we will make sure that it reads from this point forward, will be, create an environment where your colleagues and staff feel physically and psychologically safe, as though they can express their ideas without fear of being ridiculed, shamed, or hurt.
Is that good, Vice Mayor? Okay.
All right, excellent.
You know, there's also one word that's missing up in the top, the third paragraph, I guess. Let's commit to one another?
That's a great catch. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We'll make sure one gets thrown in there.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to provide a brief comment, if I might.
Sure.
It, it didn't go past me. I really appreciated the change in item number four under professionalism, which was item number six previously, just to, you know, expand it beyond not just making comments that could be perceived as attacking a colleague, but demeaning or undermining them as well. And I just think it really goes to the message today of, we're one team, and we don't want to show any fracture or division to the community. So I just, I really appreciated that change.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Any other comments, concerns, or just Mr. Hugh, or Mr. City Manager?
Do we move to adopt it? Or wait until the end? Okay, all right. And then the other item, which is expectations of staff, same draft as last year, there have been no revisions whatsoever.
Colleagues, are we good with this? Should I submit it? Okay, all right. Yes. Unanimous, we're going to accept both of them.
We'd love you, we'd love to take a vote.
Okay.
To adopt the changes.
Let's have a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schultz, and Vice Mayor is second. Any further comments? I just look forward to moving forward in this year of 2022. And I know we're going to make a great, I mean, we've been a great team. We're just going to continue and raise the bar even further.
All right.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Sorry, you can't see. Councilmember, that was Vice Mayor, right?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
And just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, that was a motion on both.
Yes.
Motion on both documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Turn my camera on button, sorry.
He is, yeah, he is in the house. Mr. City Attorney is in the house.
Okay, and now we're going to go ahead and...
I was, I was active listening, just...
Deeply, Joe, deeply, please. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the goal-setting portion, which I, what we've done is so important, because I think it's set the stage of really valuing each other's people's, each other's ideas, and feeling good about each other, and good about the direction that the city is going. And again, keeping in, keep in mind this whole idea of trust, compassion, stability, and hope as we move forward here. Operative word being hope, as we set goals here. So what we've asked the city council to do is we've sent out a list of up to 10 goals, and we've given the city council an opportunity to write down what those, what those 10 goals were. So I trust that that's probably been done on your own. And again, I'll defer to the mayor, and what we'll do here is, you can choose who you would like to go first, whether or not maybe you would want to go first. And what we'll do is we'll have the assistant city manager here, and Viviana, and she's going to be typing in each one of your goals. It's going to be shared here on the screen. They're going to be able to see it, correct?
Yeah.
Shared up here on the screen is as we go over each person, we're just going to extract those goals from each of you. We'll give each council member a chance to go. And when that is done, then we will take a brief break. We'll have a chance to put everything together, and then we'll just reconvene. And we'll look at that, make sure that we've got all the themes correct, that we've conceptualized everything the way that the council would want us to conceptualize it. And then we'll move to adopt, and those will be our goals. Those will be the marching orders essentially of staff, where they will go out and do everything they can to meet, to meet those goals.
Are we going to drop it down to five?
Yes. We're trying.
Yeah, the goal is, we'd love to get five or plus or minus, you know, a couple. So we're willing to do that. But yeah, we want it manageable enough for us to then be able to make actionable work item goals, so we could actually get stuff done.
So is there room for subgoals? I mean, can we put those out there? Because, like, for example, our goals from last year, you know, we had five. And some of, like sustainability, for example, there's so much that can go under there. Should I, for example, the olive bridge, green choice. So my question is, do we put the goal out there, like sustainability? Or do we put the, kind of the micro goals?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Springer. Certainly, we'll see how the, see how it unfolds. Clearly, when you do go over the goals, we would, as staff, would definitely appreciate you talking about certain things under a larger category. So then we could come back, as part of my goals, specific work program goals, include those specific subgoals within my goals. So we may have like sustainability, but it... So we may have, like, sustainability, but it, but if you're talking about, you know, a certain, certain different infrastructure projects, or certain sustainability projects, that you could speak to those, so then we could come up with actual action items that would serve for that sustainability goal. But I, at that point, though, I will have now, and staff will have heard what you're trying to achieve, so we don't get into a super long, so you're not necessarily setting work program goals, you're setting the overarching goal, but then at least we know where you're coming from, and that's important to us when we come back and provide you with a specific action plan.
And you know, I just want to say a few words in regards to, and I've seen this in my 12 years that I've been here, sometimes someone's goal doesn't measure up to everybody else's goal. So if, if that, you know, if that doesn't measure up to everybody else's goal, then it just doesn't make the cut. And I know some of us are very strong about certain things, and, and I've seen, like I said, I've seen it in the past, or just because the one item that was very close and dear to somebody's heart didn't make, didn't get another two or three votes, it just goes by the wayside. I don't, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's, we started with 10, and we're gonna cut it down to five. And see, we're probably gonna have same goals, you know, two, three, four, I'm sure five of us might be putting down the same thing, so that's, that's a no-brainer. But the ones that are, have only two people for one item, or one person has one item, we'll see how everything goes after, after we put them all down, I guess. We'll go that way.
Yeah, absolutely, and we would love to have some discussion, even if we ended up on five goals right now, and you know, you know, we'd love to hear your comments related to those five goals, so then we could provide, you know, the actual work program action items that we could bring back. So, so we'd love to have that, that further discussion, so nobody, those that meet the cut, we're able to deliver for you.
Okay, anybody want to volunteer to go first?
I can, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Okay, so for staff, I'm gonna say what my goal is, something that'll hopefully fit on the stick, you know, and then the short explanation after. So, goal number one for me would be comprehensive COVID-19 response. What I mean by that is working closely with the school district, Providence St. Joe's, and other community partners to set up testing and vaccination sites, while also educating the public with factual and scientific information about the virus. Number two would be economic recovery. I would like us to continue finding creative ways to reduce barriers to locally owned and small businesses, including streamlined permit review processes, reduce costs, and policies that provide greater flexibility for our recovering businesses, such as the dining in our parking lots right now, which is a great program. Number three would be affordable housing. I would like the council, sorry, am I going too quick?
You're doing great. No, thank you.
I would like us to explore creative options to facilitate the addition of affordable housing, including pre-approved ADU floor plans, and incentives for developers to exceed affordable unit minimum requirements while implementing enhanced tenant protections. Number four would be homelessness. I would like us to develop and approve our five-year homeless action plan in a way that compassionately and comprehensively reduces the number of our unhoused residents by at least 50%, including the exploration of sites for a homeless shelter or safe overnight parking. Number five, sustainability. I propose that we build upon our commitment to sustainable practices by finally hiring that sustainability coordinator, implementing our drought mitigation measures, and continuing to pursue investments in EV charging and solar energy storage. Number six is climate resiliency. I would like to see us support a Green New Deal for Burbank, which includes a transition to 100% renewable energy on the earliest feasible timeline, and all electric construction requirements, while also adopting our GG RP and implementing the citywide organic waste collection provided by Senate Bill 1383. Number seven is preserving quality of life. I believe Councilmember Frutos spoke to this at our last meeting, but I would like to see us develop standards and metrics to appropriately plan for the growth of city services, such as firefighters or utility personnel, to keep our high level of quality services as our population naturally increases. Number eight is traffic safety and infrastructure. I would like us to use, utilize all state and federal funding opportunities to make pedestrian, equestrian, and bicyclist safety improvements to our streets, while prioritizing speed reductions under Assembly Bill 43, and implementing neighborhood protection measures to mitigate the traffic impacts in our neighborhoods. Number nine is diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would like us to build upon our commitment to a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive community by undergoing a citywide organizational audit conducted by a third party, while also exploring the creation of a DEI citizen commission. Lastly, would be community workforce investments. I would like us to incorporate a community wealth policy into our updated housing element and various specific plans to ensure that a locally hired, skilled, and trained workforce is utilized under appropriate labor standards. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Schultz, appreciate it.
Next, any volunteers, please? Don't be shy, come on.
All right, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, um, thank you. These aren't in any particular order, economic recovery, development, my first five are the same that we had last year, and I would like to make sure that our residents are connected to the resources that are available, our residents and businesses, because there's a lot of money out there, and with respect to the governor's budget, and I would like to make sure that everybody is connected to what they need. Housing homelessness, that we continue our policy of integrated housing, and that we don't warehouse our lower-income population. Focus, continued focus on homeless prevention, pursue conservatorship for some of our unhoused. I've seen some of them deteriorate before my eyes over the, over the previous five years, and they aren't capable of helping themselves, and so I think we need to help them and help save their lives. Come up with some innovative for sale models for housing. Three is sustainability, and I was looking at the complete street plan, and there are some streets, for example, that lack trees, let's plant more trees. Let's pick out some complete street projects that are there that would fall under sustainability. For example, the Magnolia Bridge, the Olive Bridge isn't there, but I think we, you know, we've talked about first mile, last mile, and those are hugely important to connectivity, and I think we should focus on those two bridges as people crossings, like they do wildlife crossings, put some trees up there, make them inviting, connect one side of our city with the other, and to the Burbank MetroLink station. And see also about, get to what it would take to shave off years of our aspirational goal of zero GHG emissions by 2040, I know we have that as an aspirational goal, but what would it take to move that up? And also get behind the Green Choice program, help at the neighborhood level with gray water, and, and city services, you know, our libraries, parks, keep those up and going and viable. Quality of life, we had an email today about, and a phone call from Ms. Leah Harrison, RE Arts, you know, let's include arts in there. Childcare, senior services, all of those things that have helped our population through the pandemic, you know, Project Hope, all of those things are so critically important. Safety, and I would like for us to think about adopting a Vision Zero program where we get fatalities and injuries down to zero for car-to-car accidents, pedestrian, bicycles. It's being done effectively in Europe, maybe it started in this country. And also focus on, with some of the changes in housing, there are more cars parked on the street that results in less visibility. Also in safety, make sure that the fire department is adequately staffed. We got, we received an email on, on that, that the Triton consultation report indicated that we might be understaffed there. And also the police department, and throughout our whole city, make sure that we're adequately staffed, and everybody is paid fairly. Also neighborhood protection and local determination. Transportation, and so now I'm starting to overlap here, Magnolia and Olive Bridge, for example, first mile, last mile. How many do I have, Mr. Hugh?
Well, so-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we have six so far. The last one that you mentioned, it was transportation, I believe that is one in and of itself, correct? That would be its own separate goal?
Yes, but it can be tucked under something.
Oh, no, that's fine, you've, you've got more to go, so, so yeah, we're at about six now, I believe? Seven now, so we've got three more.
Okay, childcare. And local determination, local control. I have 10, so somehow I missed one. But I gave you a lot.
Yeah, Councilmember Springer, do you have homelessness and housing as two separate items?
No, they're one.
That's, okay, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next council member that would like to go.
Let's go with the blue one. Who's blue? I don't see that name.
I believe-
I can't see who that is.
Yeah. That is Councilmember Frutos.
All right, my first goal is traffic speeding reductions and accidents throughout the city. Goal number two is to continue last year's goal with homeless issues in our city. Three is with all the mandates coming from Sacramento, development, smart development, have the conversation of smarter development with these mandates that are coming from Four, improve the Burbank bus. We've got to do something different to improve the ridership. It's, a lot of people call all of us, and they're tired of seeing empty buses. Bring back the primary election, a lot of residents reached out to me that they would like to see the city of Burbank bring back the primary election and future elections. Six, I still like to pursue a bus, a trolley bus, that, you know, it would be a fun bus to hop on, hop off, kind of mirror the one they have up in Santa Barbara, West Hollywood had one on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings, just a different way to get people out of their vehicles and go down Magnolia Park, downtown Burbank. Seven, begin repaving alleys. Our alleys are in dire straits, the residents are calling us that they would like to have these alleys repaid. Continue to work hard with the balanced budget. I don't want to see no more red, even though I know we, we can't avoid some of this, but I still would like to work hard on the budget and be out of the red. It was brought up earlier, but I will join Councilmember Schultz, I agree. I like the idea of prefab ADUs to help out the residents, to provide ADUs for more residential housing, much cheaper, because it's prefabricated. And 10 is quality of life for our residents. As we're moving forward, and we've had these big developments, I'm really concerned that our workforce throughout, public safety's always been my priority, but I'm also looking at the entire workforce, that I'd like to know what we're projecting by 2035 as far as our human resources to meet the, you know, the high level of service for our residents and our business community. And those are my 10.
Thank you, Councilmember Frutos.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yeah, thank you. So I got 10. Number one, economic recovery. Number two, small business assistance. Number three, affordable housing production. Number four, streamline departmental operations. We can even say streamlined government operations. Number five, traffic calming measures and road safety infrastructure for all modes Number six, stronger labor standards and higher wages. Number seven, increased environmental standards. Number eight, support homeless services. Number nine, maintain staffing levels and increase as needed. Number 10, increase transit effectiveness.
All right, I think we got it. Thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate it. And last but not least, Mayor Talamontes.
Thank you very much. Economic recovery, facilitate new business, promote existing business, streamline the permit process, that's under the economic recovery. Citywide recruitment, emphasis on safety services, and obviously throughout the others, the rest of the departments, we have to emphasize the recruitment. You know, we also have to consider maybe a tiered signing bonus, I know several cities in the region have, have put together a tiered signing bonus to, obviously, to try and bring people on, so maybe we can start looking at that.
And Mayor, that would be a component of citywide recruitment?
Citywide recruitment, yes.
Thank you.
And number three is homelessness and mental health services. Maintain what we've been doing and maybe even make it better. Moderate and low-income housing, promote that. I know we don't, we don't build it, the city doesn't build those, but make it easier for, for developers to come into the city and do some of this work that we, and we're desperately in need of, the moderate and low-income housing.
Okay.
Number five, citywide speeding and traffic safety, that's definitely a focus that we should look at. Number six, sustainability. A lot of discussion on sustainability in many areas of the city. Number seven, maintain focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Maintain the pandemic safety of city of Burbank workforce and residents. More focus on the arts, we are the media capital of the world, and we really haven't been very proactive in focusing on the arts. And number 10, creation of a dog park. That's it, Mr. Hugh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Well, you start to see, there are some emerging themes here that we can start coalescing and putting together, so, and then there's some very unique, creative ones as well, that could be total standouts. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take a brief break, give everyone a chance to stretch their legs, run to the restroom, get a, get a drink, and we'll reconvene in just a few moments, and it'll give us a time, and by the way, I just want to say thank you to Viviana for typing all this, because if I had to do it, I would have screwed- if I had to do it, I would have screwed the whole thing up. So I'm very, very grateful for her doing this. Uh, so I, all I had to do is just stand here and reaffirm everything that, uh, all of you brought up. So, yeah, we'll take a quick break and we'll come back together shortly.
Great. Thank you.[612.88]
Ready to move on, Mr. Yule? We are live, okay, excellent.
All right, well, welcome back, everybody. Thank you so much for coming back. So we have had the opportunity to get together with the city manager, the assistant city manager, Viviana Garson, and what we've been able to do is take all of the ideas that you've come up with and condense them. I know we were shooting for five and we got seven. So so that was pretty good. Wasn't too bad at all. It's not too far from five and not, not
I hope all seven were from me.
100%, sir, 100%. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and pop these up on the screen here. And what we've been able to condense these two and kind of put them all together into here are these seven here. First one being economic, and there's no particular order here, but economic recovery, responsible development, housing and homelessness, sustainability, city services, transportation and traffic, quality of life and infrastructure. So if all of, all the council, if you could look at this and see if, at least as a general theme, if these capture the spirit or most of the spirit of most of the ideas. I think there's, were there some that perhaps didn't or just a few? Okay.
Yeah, just listening to each council member speak and give their, you know, their 10, I think this kind of brings it together and, you know, there's two or three council members that have mentioned, obviously, economic recovery. Others that have the housing homelessness issue. So I think this, these seven will give the city manager good direction and staff.
And something to, again, to keep in mind is that some of the things that were brought up, there, there are going to be subsets of some of these and they will, will be able to, you know, the city manager and his staff will be able to put together the actual specific tangibles that they'll do to be able to meet those goals.
So Mayor Talamontas, I have a question about transportation and traffic.
Go ahead.
So safety would fall under transportation and traffic?
Traffic safety would definitely do that. So yeah, that's what we were aiming for. And that's why we kind of separated it, just knowing that we had some traffic safety was kind of a concern for at least three of you. So, so we wanted to take that out as its own category. And of course, there's regular safety like police and that's, that's housed in the city services overall goal. Thank you.
Okay, and so pedestrians would be under transportation and traffic because it's pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, right? All traffic, multimodal, active transportation?
Correct.
Okay, and on infrastructure, is that where the bridges would come in?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and our extension of our bicycle master plan and everything is under infrastructure?
Complete streets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Yule?
Yeah, any other, yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, you know, we talked a little bit about labor standards and, you know, how people generate their own wealth and make money. And I want to be clear that that's under quality of life, that, you know, it's an important aspect of an individual. You know, an individual community member's quality of life is their job and and their own generation of wealth and earnings.
Yeah, that's in there, I believe, yeah.
Yes, those definitely fall under quality of life, sir.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other comments from, yes. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, really great list. I like it. The two questions I have are diversity, equity and inclusion. I know there's been discussion about that. Would that fall under city services or would that not be included on the list here?
I believe city manager.
Yes. We only had a couple on that one. The, the interesting thing there is though, we are already pursuing that. So, so by de facto, it's actually happening even though it didn't rise to the occasion of fitting into here, into these categories as a as a standalone. But we are actually currently in the process of that goal as well. So, so I guess you could say that it is, if I had to do it, it'd be under quality of life, but it, but it's actually happening right now.
And it's work in progress. And I knew we, the city has started on that. That's why I put it down. I just don't want to lose focus that we maintain the focus on that as well as we move forward.
Councilmember Schultz, and I don't know if this is helpful or not, but it really sounds like listening to the city manager that it sounds like this is just an embedded value of what the city of Burbank is being committed to anyway, which is diversity, equity and inclusion. That it's almost like this is just our permission to play even the game of city government, that this is, this is an absolute value that we're going after, that it's included. That in fact, it would be a part of, of everything that we do.
Mr. His.
And I, I would equate that one to like local control. So local control didn't necessarily get its own box. But we, as you know, we are big believers in, in our own destiny and local control. So, so even though that one only got a couple, it's not like we're not going to have local control anymore. No, we're going to push that hard. You're going to get our legislative platform in a couple of weeks and you're going to see a local control about 50 times. So we're still going to push that. So, thank you.
How about the arts? Where would the arts fall?
Definitely equality of life, that's for sure.
All right.
By the way, is that helpful, Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation.
Right, so can I just comment on that? I mean, I think diversity is very important. So I myself would think it would be under quality of life, so.
It is.
Perfect.
Yes. Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Okay.
Okay, from our city attorney?
I would, I would echo in particular on the diversity, equity and inclusion. It is something that we need to ensure both in city services. I agree it's important under quality of life, but it is something that we're of course engaged with from an infrastructure perspective, from a city service perspective. And so I would echo with the city manager that it's something that is embedded, not only from a value perspective, but from a compliance perspective.
Thank you, Mr. McDougall.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, I'm looking for a motion and a second to move this, these forward to be our guiding principles for us as well as the city manager. Give him some direction on what to focus on this coming year.
I'll second it.
So who made the motion?
That was me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz's motion and Councilmember Springer's second.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fudos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Yule, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much for having me. I just want to say thank you so much for being, letting me be a part of this. God bless all of you and everything that you do. You guys are doing amazing work, like I said, as a team. You have stepped into a realm that most council members and teams are absolutely not doing. The fact that you're having the, keeping this at the forefront of your mind regarding a conversation regarding ego management, getting our egos in check, emotional management, and most importantly, knowing what our values are and we are a heck of a lot more stronger together and there's a lot more in common. That's what most teams are not doing and thinking about. It's really easy to get caught up on what we're not. So I am so grateful that you indulged me in this process. This is hard to do something like this in this forum where we've got some people here, we've got some people out in the cyber world. It's very hard to be vulnerable and to create some degree of intimacy on that. The fact that we were able to pull this off and still stay within the Brown Act, that is an amazing feat. So again, I applaud the city council and thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, and I've got my cards.
Keep them, save them.
Be available, yes. Fellow council members, I appreciate your dialogue and the unique goals you shared during the session. I think we can all agree we did a great job focusing on key goals for our city in 2022. And like I said before, it's our goal to just make Burbank a better place to live, so, and work. So once again, we appreciate staff. Viviana, thank you very much for all your work setting this together and putting it together for the council. And obviously the city manager and assistant city manager. Thank you, Madam City Clerk for being here. I always enjoy having you here. And Ms. McFarland, thank you. Mr. Gray, thank you very much for being able to put this webex together. So now we, we adjourn to Tuesday, February 8th at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage at burbankca.gov backslash ecomments or by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov or by calling in directly to the city council meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you very much for joining us and stay safe out there. Thank you.